I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Fall River School Committee, August 14th. Deb, would you please call?
Call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Hart?
Here.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Ms. Roderick?
Here.
Mayor Coogan?
Here. So, to the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Pereira won't be with us tonight, she has a family commitment. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recording or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Sorry, no one signed up for citizens input tonight, nor do we have any recognition awards. Subcommittee updates. Facilities and Operations Subcommittee, Mr. Hart, chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Subcommittee took place on Monday, August 7th, on the agenda with the following. SRO memorandum of understanding, price matrix for facility school use, naming and renaming committee, and demographic study report. Mr. Pacheco requested that the Subcommittee, the SRO MOU, be tabled. There was additional information that the district was waiting for. He said currently the district had in place the 2022 MOU, the Subcommittee voted to table the item, and revisit it when the district had all the information they needed. Mr. Pacheco stated the documents the Subcommittee had before them was an updated list with pricing for the new fields that Delfi has now. There was one change, which was to the football field. He was asking the Subcommittee to refer the item to the full committee for the vetting. Mr. Pacheco provided the Subcommittee with the committee names and criteria that were approved by the committee back in 2022. Under the criteria, Mr. Pacheco was recommending a change to the criteria so a person could not, would not have to be deceased to have something named after them. He also was suggesting that the committee recommend additional names to add to the naming and renaming committee. Mr. Pacheco stated the demographic study report was a comprehensive report which provided the district with a look ahead. The report would give the district an opportunity to make an informed decision if the district needed to be redistricted. That's all for that.
And the second report we have?
Yep, the Policy Subcommittee took place on Tuesday, August 8th. The agenda was to divide into two sections. The first section of policies contained only minor grammatical changes, neutral references or updated legal references that do not alter the language or intent of the policies. The second section of policies required further reviewing and vetting from the committee. Mr. Coogan gave an update on the changes made and recommendations that were being made to the policies. Dr. Bronhad provided an overview of the updates made to the district attendance policy, but all policies were referred to the full committee for further vetting with recommendations made at the Subcommittee. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Any questions? Mr. Superintendent Ponce, a school opening update, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, back to school information. It's hard to believe, but here we are, just a few short weeks from welcoming back our scholars. As of today, our enrollment is at a healthy 10,589. Our kindergarten enrollment is at 606. I will say that there are, there were 103 students on the queue to be processed, so, and I know that we will see more registrations in the last couple of weeks of schools, so we are definitely seeing good numbers. On Wednesday, August 30th, we will welcome students in grades 1 through 12. There will be no school on September 1st and Monday, September 4th, in observance of Labor Day. Also, Tuesday, September 5th, we will welcome our youngest scholars, our pre-K kids will come back. Friday, September 8th, we will welcome our kindergarten. They will be screened in that interim, that week that we return, before they start. Also, school start and end times are posted on our website. Principals will be communicating with families directly regarding school-specific information. I will also be sending something out to families, probably next week. Transportation information is posted on our website. Parents that, who students typically are transported, should check the website. Bus routes are also, I checked today, they're already updated on the website. Student registrations are going strong. We know that if you have to reg, that, we want you to know that if you have to register a student, we know it's late, but registration is at our parents and community engagement center on Ray Street, not at individual schools, so please don't go to the school to register them, you need to go to the parent's center. Any questions? Certainly, you can, if parents have questions about opening, they can reach out to their child's school, or feel free to call my office and we'll help you and direct you. We look forward to a productive year as we prepare to welcome our staff and students back in a few short weeks. Finally, there is actually a citywide back-to-school block party happening on Saturday, August 19th, where Fall River Public Schools will be present. Parents and students attending will be able to meet school folks. Pace will be there to offer opportunities for registration, so if you can't get to the parent's center, and Saturday, you have an opportunity, we'll have technology there, you can actually register your child there. We will even have folks from our HR department there, if anyone is looking to apply for a position within Fall River Public Schools. It's a community-wide event, and Fall River Public Schools is definitely showing up as a partner with our community in preparing for welcoming our scholars and meeting many parents. We are ready for a successful year, and we look forward to meeting everyone there and within our schools. Admin Institute update, and I know I shared this with the committee for the edification of the public. We just welcomed our administrators back for our annual Administrator Institute. Last week, our administrators gathered at Delfi High School for a variety of professional development opportunities. Schools also worked in teams as they began to process data and developing priorities that are reflective of where they are as schools. There was a strong focus on attendance and how we are called to show up for our scholars. In fact, this year, you will be hearing and seeing the hashtag #showup tagline frequently throughout, in school memos, throughout our district, as we challenge one another to reflect on the many ways that we show up for our school communities. We know we cannot be successful if our scholars aren't in schools, so being a presence, adults as well as scholars, will be at the forefront of every single thing that we do, every single day. We have an incredibly strong group of administrators, ready to launch into another year. As a district, this committee has invested heavily in our admin group to ensure that schools are staffed appropriately, and we are committed to collaborating with one another as together we move our district forward. And finally, a hiring update. This has been a very, very busy time for our Human Resources Department. Since our last school committee meeting, we have onboarded 126 new hires. We have hired 49 teachers, 16 administrative positions, 31 paraprofessionals, 19 educational support positions, and 11 operational support positions. We have also lost some due to resignations and retirements. We actually have had 35 resignations, this is something that is common in August. 15 teachers, 6 administrators, 8 paraprofessionals, 3 educational support positions, and 3 operations folks have exited. And we have had 3 retirement notices, I want to say that 2 of those will not be leaving until part of the year, they will come in and then exit at their appropriate dates. We currently still have 84 teacher openings, I will say. Some of those are not direct classroom teacher openings, and again, I will say the bulk of those openings are special ed departments, ESL departments, and we have 56 para openings. Now, I say that they are openings because they're posted still on the site, but many people are being processed daily, so that number's fluid and that number will change between now, next week, and the week after. So, I know those numbers sound alarming, but those numbers are actually lower, will be lower by the end of the week and the ensuing weeks. So, we are getting ready to go, we will be ready within a couple of weeks, so we welcome, to welcome everybody back, and that's it.
Thank you, Superintendent. Item number 6, student comment. We don't have our student comments set up for the year yet. I do have 3 sets of minutes. I'm looking for approval of the minutes from the Technology Subcommittee on 7/6/23. I'm looking for approval of the minutes of the Regular School Committee from 7/17/23, and approval of the minutes from the Facilities and Operations Subcommittee from 8/7/23.
Motion to approve 7.1, 7.2, and 7.3.
Second. I have a motion, a second, any discussion on the minutes? Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number 8 is approval of travel requests. We have 1 travel request on the agenda for our marching band.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Deb, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Dragia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number 9 is the acceptance of donations. We have 2 with us tonight. I'm looking for a motion, a second, before the superintendent reads the donations.
Motion to accept. Second.
I have a motion, a second. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Dragia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Superintendent?
Thank you. From the 1-8 Foundation to middle school science classrooms, $18,500 to help defray the cost of science kits. And from Maureen Monte to the Watson Elementary School, on behalf of Principal Hoag, she accepts 5 bicycles donated to be used in student raffles associated with ST Math competition and Lexia competitions throughout the school year. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Contracts. We have a number of contracts for approval tonight, but obviously, we would like to discuss or talk about anybody that anyone has any issues with, if you give them to them before we do the bulk, I'll be glad to pull them out. Anybody have any contracts of concern? No. Mr. Mayor? Mr. Agia?
UAspire, Wilkinson Boiler.
Okay, UAspire.
One goal.
Wilkinson Mobile Boiler. What was your third one?
One goal.
One goal, okay.
And Precision Human Resources, under the old one.
Precision Human Resources, and one goal. All right, so we have 4 that have been taken out. UAspire, One Goal, Wilkinson Boiler, and Precision Human Resources. Could I get a motion, a second, on the others?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Deb, would you call the roll?
Ms. Dragia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Mr. Agia, on UAspire.
I just was curious if this was the presentation that we got last month?
Yes, it is. If you recall, I think a couple of months ago, some of those contracts that we have, instead of just automatically rolling them over, I think you asked for some specifics about it, so we've been bringing a couple of them forth. They actually presented last week, last month, in regards to the work that they're doing within our schools.
So, the, because there's one, another one on One Goal, which is also at the high school, is that just totally different?
Yeah, it's a different, different grade.
And I would just ask that we get some information on why are we not just hiring the person for us? That was what I had suggested last time, so as we proceed, that's just a line going forward, not that I don't want to approve this, so I'm good with both that one and the One Goal, just that I think if we're going to pay the individual to work via a grant, like a third party, it sounded like she was almost like an employee of the high school, and if she's doing valuable work, why don't we just pay it, instead of paying an outside third party? That's...
Okay. Well, we'll get you some information for Friday.
Can I get a motion? And a second?
Motion to approve.
Can I get a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, on UAspire. Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Dragia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. The next held was Wilkinson Mobile Boiler.
My question on that is the reimbursement from the building committee, so just an update.
Mr. Pacheco.
So, the Boiler is in the process of being installed as we speak, the new boiler, which is a warranted issue, and then we are looking for these funds to be returned back to the district via that warranty from the installer, and also from the manufacturer of the boiler.
So, it's going to be a considerable, if this is 2 months, then it's been like that for a while, so we're going to get all of that money back, is that...
That's, that is the hope, yes. That is what we're looking for in the settlement, yes.
And then that comes back to the school committee?
That will come back, that will come back to the district, yes.
Meaning the school district?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
On Wilkinson Mobile Boiler, I have a motion, a second. Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Dragia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. One Goal, Mr. Agia?
I'm good on that one, I thought we added this together.
Can I get a motion, a second?
Motion to approve. Second.
Deb, please.
Ms. Dragia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. The last one we held was Precision Human Resources. Mr. Agia?
I just would like an update of what that, what does that get us for $400,000, and where is that money coming from?
We have the money in the special ed contracted services budget, and what that will get us is staffing for teachers and paras as we have the openings to start the year, and it will fill holes throughout the year. So, it fluctuates over the course of the year, depending on if we're able to hire people, you know, as the year goes on, and it's just there as a placeholder at the moment.
So, is the same, is this an every-year thing?
Yes.
And what happens if the person was in the budget and they replace, if they're doing a service of somebody in the budget?
So, then we would have to move the money around in the budget in order to make that, and make that happen. So, last year, I believe we started at 300,000 or 400,000 at the beginning of the year, and this contract increased over the course of the year, it's for almost $1 million over the course of the year. So, then we would require salary savings in order to move it over to cover this.
Right, so, the only way I'll support this is if, as we go forward, I think it's important because we need to staff the agencies or staff the teachers and assistants or whoever, is that I believe what happens is we have budgeted money in positions that we say we can't fund a person, so we're going to fund it through this, and this committee doesn't get until the end of the year, which is, I was a little critical of, that we get a $3 million surplus at the end of the year. So, the only way I would support this right now, and I think I would recommend, and nobody else supports it either, unless we're going to get periodic updates. So, as we have money in the budget that we know we're paying for a service provider instead of the budget, every month it should come off that, the other number should go down, so that therefore we would have some flexibility on how to spend it, we won't have a $3 million surplus at the end of the year.
Good.
That's reasonable, we can, we can put something together and update as the numbers go up or down. We will inform the committee.
And then we're going to have changes.
Yep.
So, I mean, it kind of makes sense, I would think, but, so you're making that commitment?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion to approve.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Ms. Roderick.
Mr. Bailey, or Ms. Roderick, any discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Dragia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number 11 is the approval of...
Just a minute.
Mr. Agia?
I had questions on the new, I had said, my questions were on the old contracts? We usually take those separately.
All right.
So, I had a question on industrial pump, Markat Ford, and Ignite Reading.
All right, so we'll do that right now separately. We'll approve all but 3 on new contracts?
Motion to approve.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Dragia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Mr. Agia, industrial pump sales.
So, this is at the Doran School? I just had a question on, there's been some leaks down there, or like some flooding and all that stuff?
So, this is a sewage jack that handles the lower floor.
And is there any issue down there with the generator?
No.
That a generator works, or has it been working for years?
No. The generator is fine. There was issues, this is not the cause. This was not part of the generator issue. The generator issue was corrected, this is something else.
Did we have a generator issue at some point?
We did, yes.
And now it's rectified?
Yes.
So, it wasn't working and now it's working?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Dragia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Next, Markat Ford, Mr. Agia?
Just a question on the, I know we keep, when we purchase, we go through a place not in Fall River, based on the state bid list and all that stuff.
State business. Yes.
Have we ever gone to the local Ford dealership and asked them to match the price?
Have we? No, we haven't. Because it's not, I mean, I would need to get more than just that from them, because if we're going to go to individual dealerships, then we would need to go with a formal bid.
So, are they on the state bid list?
They're not on the state bid list, no.
May I just ask the superintendent, via Mr. Pacheco, to reach out to the local Ford dealership, to explain to them that if they wanted to get us to purchase vehicles from them, whatever the process is, so that, it just seems like we're just approving it, and I think we should be going to locals whenever we can, at least give them a fair shot at it. Thank you. Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, discussion. Deb, call the roll on Markat Ford, please.
Ms. Dragia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Ignite Reading?
So, this, I think, is, well, I got 2 questions. One is probably just a gender item that is backwards, because we're going to approve this, and we're going to approve the grant that's paying for this after?
You're right, the grant, actually, we need to move that out, I'm sorry. You're right, it's, because the grant was actually supposed to be here last month, Ms. Kennedy wasn't able to be here, so they both came on the same, so that's what it is, yes.
It just looks like we're doing one thing before the other.
Yep.
But while I have you, so, I don't know if this came before the Subcommittee, but it sounded similar, familiar, but the more I looked at it, it was for tutoring during the day, while the kids are with teachers. Can you tell us how that would?
Yes.
I'm just trying to figure out how that would work.
Yep, so it is virtual, one-on-one, high-dose tutoring with a trained reading teacher, and so while students are in the win block, so that's the what I need block, their intervention block, these students would, in addition to being serviced by their teacher, receive an additional dose, so they might not go to a station, another station in the classroom, instead, they'd have this one-on-one time that will provide them an additional dose of instruction.
And that's, like, functionally doable in a school, like, they just go by themselves? Like, what are they?
No, they don't actually leave the room, oh, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say that. Out of the schools, there's one that will have students leave the room, and that's Spencer Borden. So, Spencer Borden will take all the students that are going on this high-dose one-on-one tutoring into a separate location, and have students with headsets and computers, all with their own separate tutor during this 15-minute chunk of time. But in the classroom, it would just be like a child is going to the next center, and so the center for that child, between, say, 9:00 and 9:15, is that they're on their computer headset on, engaging with their tutor.
And is this money not able to be spent for us to hire a real person?
No, it's not. This program is through the 1-8 Foundation, which we also work closely with in both science and in math with ST Math, and the tutor, the study itself is around this high-dose one-on-one tutoring. And so, in order to provide that to all the schools, of course, we could have a human do it, but the money would not allow us to be servicing 300 students, that amount of money.
So, it doesn't prohibit it, you're telling me this is a trial, like a study?
It's a study.
It's a proven, it's a proven research, but what they're, what the trial is, is kind of like they're trying to get their name out there. I'm sure it's about, you know, trying to get people to hop on board with their training after it's not paid for anymore, but they already have a solid research base.
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to vote for it as a grant, obviously, you know, but I would ask that we get some, as much data as possible to know whether it's actually working or not.
Absolutely. Yeah, and so, up until this point, we have ordered the texts that they are basing their instruction on. We are being part of every single meeting that the company is having, so we can see how they're digging into that data, is it different than what we do? We're talking about how we can use our intervention staff for next year, when we will not have We're talking about how we can use our intervention staff for next year, when we will not have the grant at this, at this level. And so that we can start to mimic some of the things that we know are working, especially that one-on-one piece, which has the highest research basis, being the most effective. And so how can we use our current staff to improve our own structures and systems in our buildings?
Yeah. I, I think it's valid. Just report back, and hopefully it works.
Yeah.
Motion approved.
No. I think we have to approve the grant first, and then, right?
I think on your catch, Mr. Aguirre. We'll come back to this one.
I'll make a motion to approve the grant under number 11 for 1A Foundation.
Well, how about all the grants? We have, yeah, they're all open, they're all one. Let's go to grants first and do that. Mr. Aguirre.
Sure. Motion approved.
Do I have a second? This is item number 11. I have a motion. And a second on approval of grants. Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Dragu.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Harp.
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie.
Yes.
Ms. Perera. Ms. Rodrick.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. Going back to the new grants, ignite a reading. The grant.
Motion approved.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second, Deb. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Dragu.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Harp.
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie.
Yes.
Ms. Perera. Ms. Rodrick.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. Item number 12, Committee of the Whole. 12-1 is a discussion and vote to approve the selection and appointment of Debbie Aruda, Nurse for the Fall Republic Schools, as presented by Mary Gustaf, Director of Nursing. Now, do I have a motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do we want any discussion on this? Hearing none. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Dragu.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Harp.
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie.
Yes.
Ms. Perera. Ms. Rodrick.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. 12-2 is a vote to approve the school committee delegate for November's MASC/MASS joint conference, as presented by Maria Potts, Superintendent of Schools.
So, as you know, this is an annual conference. It will be happening on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of November 8th through the 10th. And we are looking for representation for Fall River.
I nominate Ms. Rodrick.
Everyone's looking at me. I went last year, I can go again. That's fine.
I think.
That was interesting. Everyone turned their heads this way.
We know how much you loved it, and you brought back some great information, so we appreciate your efforts.
Lawrie. Lawrie's in there.
I was gonna call you Mimi. Ms. Lawrie.
So I did, Mayor, I did speak with Sarah today, just to see if she was interested. I told her I may join her if there is an opportunity for two of us to go. I just have to check in on work and see if it's possible.
Great.
Okay.
Can I get a, a motion to approve Ms. Rodrick as our delegate?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Dragu.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Harp.
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie.
Yes.
Ms. Perera. Ms. Rodrick.
I suppose yes.
Yes. 12-3 is a discussion and vote to approve the addition of a Vice Principal at the Fonseca Elementary School, as presented by Superintendent Potts.
So, as, as you know, Fonseca School is in turnaround for several years now. We have new leadership in the school, starting, well, started July 1st. Principal Cobb is actually here. The school, 30% of the staff is new. The school has struggled, both academically as well as with SEL issues. Principal Cobb is restructuring the school and her leadership team to support teachers as well as students. I think that she wants to create opportunities for Vice Principals to be more proactive, to be in classrooms as well, as opposed to just being, you know, dealing with tier-three behaviors and never being able to be in the classrooms and supporting the teachers. I think that if you go to the problem, the problem doesn't come to you. So Principal Cobb is asking for an additional VP to help support the work at Fonseca.
Any discussion on this item? Mr. Aguirre.
Yeah, so the, as we go through the budget and having been here for a few years, I've asked a lot of questions on the amount of staff that we've had at the level four schools. Historically, I would have liked to have seen some of that in, in this. So Principal Cobb is new, I get it, I understand. But we have sat here for years approving additional positions, many which were listed in the turnaround plan. And we spent a lot of money over the last five years, let's say, on additional staff. And one of the things that bothers me that we do here sometimes is we say, well, we're gonna fund this instead of that. And then three, four years later, now we're funding this and that. And I think that's a similar case here. I wanna make sure that she's successful, so I'm gonna support this. But I do think we're owed an explanation on the amount of staff that has been at that school. And I have personally asked those questions over the years. Do we have enough staff at every budget meeting? At every budget hearing for the Fonseca School? We're making progress. We're doing the right things. We're making progress. We're doing the right things. And then we find out, well, we weren't making the progress, and we weren't doing necessarily the right things, and now we need to do things different. So I'm just voicing my frustration with it a little, but I'm gonna support this for the reason of we need to start strong. But we need to analyze the budgets, and historical perspective is important. With that, I make a motion to approve. If there's not.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Deb, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Dragu.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Harp.
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie.
Yes.
Ms. Perera. Ms. Rodrick.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. 12-4 is a discussion and vote to approve the updated policies as referred by the Policy Subcommittee and presented by Tom Coogan, Human Resource Director.
Motion approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Mr. Coogan.
The committee may be aware or recall that in the spring, we had a sizable release of policy updates from MASC. And in those policy updates, there was approximately 90-plus policies to address. We addressed half of them in a school committee meeting two months ago. This represents the other half. This first batch of policies are really just minor language updates or updates to the legal references. The laws may have changed. There's a new citation for a law, or a gender change, change in the words his/her to their, such, such things. The first group of policies really contains no change to the intent of the original policy. And they also include anything where there's a minor merge between an existing Fall River policy that we wanna keep the language from and an updated MASC policy. We've just included those items that the school committee previously approved. I would ask that you approve this first batch of policies, and I'll answer any questions the committee may have.
Any questions on the first batch? Hearing none. Mr. Aguirre.
So this, the policy I'm referring to is school committee negotiating agents?
Can you give me the letter of? I'm sorry. Just so I can, they're in alphabetical order, so I can refer to it.
There's a bunch of pages, and I'm trying to figure out which one's which.
If you look at the, oh, let's go to the agenda. See if I can help you.
If you go to the top, Mr. Aguirre, and you tell us the, the letters, it's easy to find.
The one I'm looking at is HB.
Negotiation legal status.
Yep.
HB. B as in boy.
It's HB.
So, like, there's a series of HBs. So it's HB, and then it's HB. And then there's another one that says HB with "they" highlighted in yellow. Then there's HF. They all seem to be very similar to. So I'm assuming that when these got looked at, we look at the entire policies to know whether it's pertinent to what we do or not? Is that a fair assessment?
Yes. The, the policy HB just talks about the legal status of the district and following Chapter 150 under a mass general laws. And then in the original one, there's references to employees having the right to organize, et cetera. That's been updated with the legal reference that's on, on the first.
But we, Fall River Public Schools, we don't necessarily have an outside negotiator. We have Attorney Assad, who is our employee, and he's in, in the negotiator.
So you're referring to HB or HF?
Both. Like, they, I think they all kinda come to go together. One of them, HB, talks about the legal status and then whatever we do, and then they're all related to negotiation. So my thing is, I, I just don't think it's, it's appropriate. What we do, we have an employee do it. So I don't think we need all this stuff to, you know, to go back and forth on. And then it talks about how we're gonna do negotiations. But we don't necessarily pay attention to this when we, like, we don't appoint Attorney Assad as our lead negotiator. I know because of his history here.
Well, the, the language in the, in the policy says that the committee designates a negotiator, and that is Mr. Assad.
Right, but when do we do that? And how, how are we going to do negotiations all the time? Do we actually vote on that?
It doesn't say that it requires a vote. It just says that you designate the lead negotiator.
Madam Superintendent, do you understand what I'm saying, or am I totally off base?
Are you, are you, do you wanna add, are you saying that you wanna add something to the existing policy? Because you all would have to add the language that you wanna see there, right?
This one in the one that was, like, sort of just not changing anything, that's why I didn't look at it at the subcommittee? But as I'm looking at it now, it looks like as if we should, at some point, vote to appoint the lead negotiator along with how we're gonna negotiate.
Well, Mr. Aguirre, he's appointed when you hire him. That's, that's part of the process. You appoint him when you hire him as your legal counsel. And then there's usually meetings before the negotiations begin, where you give him the parameters for what you wanna discuss during negotiations, what you're willing to do, et cetera. And that's, that's the process. I don't think, I don't think the language is objectionable to what, what you're, the point you're raising.
So I think it's confusing, for one. And for two, I think we should be making decisions on how we're gonna do our negotiations on a regular basis. So I'd like to do collaborative bargaining, because quite frankly, I'm, I'm not comfortable with the way we've been going about it. Because it doesn't, we don't get to the end result. So I'd like to, as one member, have collaborative bargaining. I've never once since I've been on here for a while, sat across from the table from my colleagues in, in the unions to have a discussion. When do we vote on that? We don't. And that's why I think this needs to be adjusted to what we actually do, so that we could have a say if we're gonna do that or not. But we don't. With that, I yield.
Anything further on the policies? I have a motion, a second, on the first batch. Deb, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Dragu.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Harp.
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie.
Yes.
Ms. Perera. Ms. Rodrick.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. 12-5 is discussion and vote to approve the updated policies as referred by the Policy Subcommittee and presented by Tom Coogan, Human Resource Director. Can I get a motion, a second?
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Discussion on the new policies. Hearing none. Deb, would you please call the, oh, Mr. Aguirre, sorry.
So these are new policies that, if you read the, the piece, it talks about, we reviewed them at the subcommittee, and the committee should look into it or weigh in on them. It's something along those lines. So can somebody highlight what is different between the subcommittee meeting and now?
So I, I've reached out to several other legal resources for some guidance on the proposed fraternization policy. So I'd ask the committee hold off on that policy tonight until we get more information back from them. I've had several communities that I've contacted, where I previously compared their policy on that particular topic. And MASC, I'm waiting for a return call from them, from the conversation we had towards the end of last week. So that policy, I would just ask that you set aside, as opposed to approving it at this point. And I'll bring it back as soon as I have more legal information for you. It's an important topic. It doesn't preclude the committee from acting, in, in the case of something, or the administration from acting in the case of something that comes up. There's a policy, GBEBD, which is new to the committee. That is online fundraising and solicitations. It's come up at a number of times where somebody seeks out a donation through GoFundMe or something. This policy merely puts some structure to that process. It requires approval ahead of time. It also requires that the person who's soliciting follow certain guidelines to make sure they're operating ethically, as well as checking in with technology, so that we're not seeking donations of equipment that's not compatible, either from a techno, technology standpoint, or from a software standpoint with anything that the district is trying to do. So there's a number of safeguards in there, which just protect us in the process. That's a new policy. There is a policy that just tightens up the language on employment of principals. It, it's referred to as GCBB. That policy has minor changes from the previous policy approved by the committee. However, it was suggested at the subcommittee meeting that the committee have the ability to set parameters for the way they negotiate with principals on contracts. And I believe the language in the first paragraph does that, so. But I'm certainly willing to let the committee member that brought that issue forward address it if he wishes to. Some of the other policies that are there.
So may, may I just interrupt for a second?
Sure.
So at the subcommittee, we brought up some valid points, and we had, I think, thought we had a nice discussion about some of the policies. It was suggested at that time, which what I was expecting to look at now, would be a one-pager, where we say, here's what the policy was, here's what it said, something very, very clear. As I'm going through what I see in this binder, I don't know if I'm missing it, there's nothing in here that's clear, related to that issue. I see every now and again, a highlight underneath that says, at the policy, it was suggested that we allow blah, blah, blah. But what is the recommended policy? So we were gonna go through just now and say, motion approved, get it to go through, and be gone. If I didn't stop and say, what, please explain what it is, half the things that are, that we ask for are not even here. Were they requiring a further discussion of the committee to say, what would the committee as a whole do? But when are we gonna get, like, a paper that says, here's what my recommendation is as superintendent, as HR director, or whoever? This is what, like, I, I just, I, I don't know where the disconnect is. We, we sat and talked about it, didn't we?
We did.
So why are we coming here a week later, if we're not ready, just say, we, we're not ready, we, we need to do some more work on it? We're gonna go here at the end, we're gonna go to an attendance policy. I said at the subcommittee meeting, the attendance policy is exactly how we should do a policy. It articulates exactly what was changed or not changed, and very clear for the committee. I thought it was pretty clear what we were gonna do. And I just don't understand why we can't get from one subcommittee to now, the, the, um... Looking back at the GIFs, here's an example. I mentioned that at the time, there was some kind of policy that we had to go look at to say, how much was the GIFs that we were gonna talk about? Here's the policy, if, if I'm looking at it right, and it has a highlight, and it says, lo and behold, it says, note, include the cost limit practice instituted by the school committee. That's what it says here in the policy. Now, we asked at the policy subcommittee, what, we, we didn't know what it was, 50, 100, a certain minimum, so we don't have to do it. You're telling me that in a week, we can't get the number and put it in the policy? That anything over whatever that number was, which we were supposed to research, to put it in this policy so that the full committee can actually know what they're voting on? I, I, it's, I just don't understand. I, I go to a public comment, complaints one.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Aguirre, there's a motion to table. We'll come back next meeting.
If I could just say, can we at least look at the attendance, because I'd like that to be ready for us for opening.
Day one, okay.
And that's, seems to be ready.
Do you wanna do that?
I, I just have one question on a, on a different matter, the same, on a, on a different policy. The public complaint policy. It was suggested that this not be included. It says in parentheses. The, the matter says, talking about public complaints, complaints about school personnel will be investigated fully and fairly. However, before any such complaint is investigated, the complainant must submit their complaint in writing. Anonymous complaints will be disregarded. Matters referred to the school, superintendent of the school committee must be in writing and should be specific in terms of the action desired. Now, I said at the time, I'm not voting for this if it says that language. So we almost voted here today to vote with a note, thankfully, there's a note there, that says, at the subcommittee, it was suggested that this requirement not be included. At the subcommittee, I asked the superintendent, is this a policy that you approve of? Superintendent said yes, but it sounded like after a discussion, we might change it a little, because maybe it doesn't make as much sense, or we might need to tweak it a little. So I figured, we're gonna go for the next week. When this comes back, there's no way in hell this is gonna come back the same as it is. And lo and behold, what do we got? The same one. So I wanna table it, because I think there, I, I don't know what to say. We have a meeting, we have a subcommittee meeting. Mr. Hart and I took an hour and a half of our time to sit there. We went over the policies, we did a good job. If I'm gonna do that for my hour and a half, all I expect somebody to do is listen and come back with it. If you disagree, you disagree. You just write it. Don't come back with the same stuff without an answer. It, it does, it defies logic. The attendance policy, I agree with 100%, and I told you that at the subcommittee. So I'll make a motion to approve the attendance piece of this, because we can't table it first, otherwise we wouldn't.
No. I say we table everything, pull that out, like we do with everything else, and go to that one.
That's fine.
All right. So I have a motion to table the new policies. I have a motion, a second, leaving out the Fall River Public School attendance policy. I have a motion, a second. Discussion on the table. Deb, call the roll, please.
Ms. Dragu.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Harp.
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie.
Yes.
Ms. Perera. Ms. Rodrick.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. Now, and I'm looking for a motion, and a second, to approve the Fall River Public School attendance policy.
Motion approved.
I have a motion. I have a second. Any discussion? Deb, give it a ride, please.
Ms. Dragu.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Harp.
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie.
Yes.
Ms. Perera. Ms. Rodrick.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes.
Right now, we're gonna move to 12.6, discussion and vote to approve a Human Resource Manager to the Human Resource Department, as presented by Tom Coogan, Human Restore, Resource Director.
My apologies. I thought we had one in between. This was a position that previously existed in the HR department. The Human Resource Manager position was vacant from 2016 to the end of 2018. At that time, we added an HR Coordinator, who basically manages the evaluation system, the attendance software for the 2,000, 2,200 employees that we now have working within the system. The HR Manager position is needed because of the volume of employees that we have now. In addition, there is a number of critical issues that have come up. We're entering a cycle of negotiations with all nine bargaining units. And there are a number of factors that just require more attention, more human capital, to be able to manage those tasks. I would ask that you reinstitute, institute this position, and we, we post and hire for it.
Looking for a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Was there a second? I couldn't hear. I'll defer to anybody else that wants to ask questions on this.
Go ahead. Ms. Dragu.
Nobody else?
I have a question, but I'm calling on.
No, I'm, I'm just saying, I wanna let everybody else go first, so.
I called on you. You can ask your question.
Oh, certainly. So what does the, the hot man look like when you? I basically just said in the last comment, related to what we need, what we don't need, and how we, we run departments. And then we find out, well, we took a different position, then we come back and we add a position. And guess where we're at now, two items later. Here we are again. Same exact thing. At the time, when we voted to say we were gonna combine positions, we were gonna pay somebody a little extra money, have this and that, we voted for, I voted for it, and said we were gonna do it, at every meeting, every budget meeting. Do we have what we need? Yes, we have what we need. Do we need any more positions? Nope, we don't need any more positions. Meanwhile, things are going haywire. But we just keep on going and say we don't need positions. And now we're gonna be here again, saying we need another position, because of what? What was, what was new now, August, whatever the date is, August 14th? That was different than June 30th.
Yes.
So we had a discussion about this position earlier in the spring, and we decided to wait on it. The superintendent and myself, we went back and forth about whether or not we could sort of redeploy the resources within the Human Resources Department and cover the tasks that are cited here in this job description. And really, with the volume of, of work that's there now, it's, it's really a necessary position. So a reconsideration, if you will, but not, not from a lack of planning or discussion prior to this.
Madam Superintendent, do you have anything to say on that?
Well, I, I mean, I, Mr. Coogan, as he said, we've had many discussions about this. The department is understaffed. We have hired many people, the volume of work that goes through that office. We need to be efficient, and I think that there is just too much work for, for people in that department. You know, so this is a start. I, I, I wasn't, I wasn't around when that position was eliminated, but I certainly see that, Mr. Coogan, needs an additional position down there to support the work. We, there's work that has to be done. And as you know, HR is time-sensitive. We have to get the work done, and it has to get done immediately, in addition to all the other things that come across that department unexpectedly.
So you know my stance on it, because I've mentioned this to the whole committee and yourself, that there's only a few departments in our org shot, in our organizational structure, that don't have an assistant. that don't have an assistant superintendent, a deputy superintendent, or anyone overseeing them. I've mentioned that since the spring, the same thing, saying, we need help, because we're not doing things we need to do, we need help. I'm not denying the fact that HR department needs help. But when I suggested it, many years, over a year ago, that we need to have that position answered to an assistant superintendent or a deputy superintendent, it fell on deaf ears. Oh, it sounded good, but we'll maybe wait, this and that. I don't think this is correcting what we need to do in that department. Are they understaffed? Sure. I've been saying it all along. But now, all of a sudden, we go to the budget, oh, no, we're not gonna do that, we're not gonna do this, it's only two months after the budget. If you can't understand why somebody that pays attention to the budget would be upset, when over and over, principals don't get a chance to bite at that apple. They come at budget time and say what they need for their department, they need for their school. They wouldn't come back, they wouldn't even dare, some of them, come and say, oh, by the way, I also was talking about this, so I need another, like, it, it, to me, I'm gonna support it, because I think we need to have more people in that department. But it's tiring when it's just the same thing over and over. Where's the, where's the background on this? In this one pager, where is the background on, what does the department look like? What does the department look like compared to other districts? What does the department look like from five years ago? What is the thing? It, they're underfunded. I'm not denying that piece, but we've known that for so long, we know that it's not performing at the level that it should, that entire department, but we've kept it and said, oh, no, we're not gonna do it. Meanwhile, we've got millions of dollars that we could spend. So, I'm gonna support it, 'cause we have the money. But it's just frustrating that we need to have more background info, so we know what it was, what it wasn't, and maybe some comparison. This is why I need this. You probably look at a comparison, you might say, you need two positions or something. But we're only gonna go with the one here. Let's just fix it. If we did the comparison analysis, and said, in order to make us more efficient and do this, and not drop the ball on anything, we need X, Y, and Z, Mr. Coogan should come to you, you should come to us and say, here's what we need, let's fix it and, and staff that department properly. That's my level of frustration. Not that Mr. Coogan doesn't have a right to come before us now. I wish this would've came before us at the budget, because I think we would've had a different conversation.
One of the things that's difficult to compare, when you do a district-by-district comparison, and I've had conversations with other districts throughout the thing, I'm a member of the MASPA, MAS Association of School Personnel Administrators, is that some districts have a different structure. For instance, in Fall River, benefits are administered through the department at City Hall, we don't handle that within our department. So, in some cases, where a school department or a school district does benefits administration through their office, they may have three, four, five more employees, depending on the volume of, of things. It depends which functions are handled within HR. In some cases, they do get involved in some of the financial aspects, payroll, and other type things. So, that really affects, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, when you look at all districts. So.
No, I get it, but that would be done in your analysis. You would say, this might look like something, but they have another, it, it's basically just showing the committee, who is part-time, to just show us, why are we advocating for this, that, and the other thing? So, you could say that exact thing, and then you add your department, if, the case you just mentioned. You could probably add your department and the city's HR department together, and they still don't equal what some school departments have, for a quality HR department. I'm just gonna go out on a limb and say, that's probably true. We don't have any analysis, is the point. All I'm asking for is to do some analysis, so we know, and we have the resources to fund it properly, and then hold people accountable to do the work. With that, I'll make a motion to approve, if it's not done already.
There is.
Seconding.
Okay, Deb, roll the call. Mr. Agia?
Did you have a question, was it answered?
No, you asked it.
Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Perera?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Upstee. Twelve seven is a discussion and vote to approve the fourth quarter revolving fund, as presented by Kevin Almeida.
Reported to you here is the, are the thirteen revolving funds. Each one of the revolving funds have positive balances. We started the year with just about twelve million dollars in the revolving funds, we ended the year with just over thirteen million dollars in the funds. With that, I'm requesting a vote to approve, please.
Any discussion? Ms. Roderick's.
Kevin, I couldn't hear anything you just said, sorry.
Oh, that's okay. So, the report in front of you has the, our thirteen revolving funds, this is our fourth quarter report. Each fund has a positive balance. As you can see, the, the balance went from twelve million at the beginning of the year, to thirteen million where we stand now, and I'm just requesting a vote to approve, please.
Okay, thanks.
Any, Mr. Agia?
Yeah, thank you for the information. I'd like to request that two items get placed on the next Special Education Subcommittee meeting, from this revolving account, one being the state's better reimbursement circuit breaker?
Yep.
And the second one, stone tuition?
Yep.
So that we can discuss ways to spend that money on our children.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can you say that one more time, and I didn't hear what the first one was?
The special ed, circuit breaker, the bottom two numbers are related to special education funding, and I think we need to, on a regular basis, speak about that at Subcommittee, so we know what additional things we can provide for our children. Motion to approve, otherwise, if not done.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion to second, any further discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Perera?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Yes. Twelve eight is a discussion and vote to approve the design development and construction phase of the Robert L. Mediris Resiliency Preparatory Academy, as presented by Ken Pacheco, Chief Operating Officer.
Motion approved.
I have a motion to approve, I have a second.
Seconding.
A motion to a second?
Just one question.
Mr. Agia.
The, can you get us, not so much for right now, but over the next, whatever, week or so, what has happened in the building as far as, um, space? So, I know at one point, we had like, two floors, then there was three floors, four floors, I'm just curious to see, with this, the whole building's gonna have new windows, I get all that stuff, but what is the use of the building, how much do we have, are we using it all? Something like that. Thank you, I yield.
Anything further, Ms. Roderick's?
And then, just to follow up on that, like, what's a projected timeframe to get some of this work done, so that way we can access the whole building?
Sure.
And I know you can't give exact dates, 'cause lord knows that's not gonna happen, but just some kind of an idea of what, what that would be.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Yeah, if, if I could, there's some vote language that we need to do for the record? Mr. Hart?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. To see if the city of Fall River vote to appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds an amount of money to be expended under the direction of the Fall River School Committee for a MSA, MSBA accelerated repair project at the RLM Resiliency Preparatory Academy, two ninety Rock Street, consisting of windows and doors replacement project. The project consists of replacement of exterior doors and windows, in addition of an accessible bathroom, which this proposed repair project would materially extend the useful life of the school and preserve an asset that otherwise is capable of supporting the required educational program, and for which the city may be eligible for a school construction grant from the MSBA. The city acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need, as determined by the MSBA, and any project costs the city incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the city. Any grant that the city may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of one eighty percent of eligible approved project costs, as determined by the MSBA, or two, the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Any further discussion?
I, I am gonna need a second. Mr. Hart made that motion, so I will need a second.
We have a motion to second, thanks, Ms. Roderick's. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee? Upstee. Ms. Perera?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes. Twelve nine is a discussion and vote to approve the pricing matrix for the, for facilities of school use, as referred by Facilities and Operations Committee, and presented by Ken Pacheco, Chief Operating Officer. Mr. Pacheco.
So, there's a, a small, small list of changes, proposed changes, that we're looking for, and only one of the changes exists in the current matrix that we have. So, the Mac Aldridge Stadium was one that was in the, in the original approval, that the school committee voted on, I think it was last year. So, the rest of the items, right across, nonprofit, profit, and again, non-community, non-community, the same thing, nonprofit and profit. This covers all of the multi, of all the fields, including the multi-use field at Cuss, and they are all the artificial turf fields, which is what we're most concerned with when we do our rentals. There's also a, a fee for lighting, that we're including, because if they're using those fields, the opportunity for night use is now available, that wasn't available before.
I have, I have one que, is this per hour?
These are per hour.
Okay.
And the, the statement that was originally written into the other pieces, is that anyone, any group who is looking for some relief, nonprofit group who's looking for some relief, can always see the superintendent, and she can have that discussion with them, and then bring it to the committee, to have that waived.
Any further discussion on this? Question? Ms., Ms. Larrabee?
So, we're going from last year's, well, the amounts from last year, from seventy-five, I'm going for Mac Aldridge right now, the stadium, from seventy-five to one fifty, right, for nonprofit community?
Yes.
Okay. Does that cover any security, is that included with the rental?
No, this is just a straight rental of the, right, so on top of this, they would have any of the required, so you would necess, you would not necessarily need, it's not, it's not a flat fee, so to speak. So, what would happen is, if, if you're, if you're planning on having an event that's gonna have eight hundred people at it, or a thousand people, then we're gonna ask you to have extra security. Depending on the age group, we may ask you to have police officers at that event. We've had issues in the past with some groups, when they do use the field. It's always with adults, never with kids. So, we, you know, we, we require certain things when these fields are used, and it, and it is based on which group is using it, and what their event is gonna entail.
I think my only concern is that the community nonprofit, like, we don't have much of a break with that, it's the one fifty, the one seventy-five, or the one twenty-five for other fields, to one fifty in comparison, but if you're saying that a non-for-profit organization could reach out to the superintendent, if the superintendent feels, deems it's necessary to, to come in front of us, I mean, I would, I know I would appreciate that, and would like to be told, if they are reaching out, if, if that's possible, Madam Superintendent. I think, I, I just think it's a little close, in, in, in money-wise, one fifty to one seventy-five, but, um, I mean, I'm gonna prove, I'm gonna vote yes, but with that, I guess, request, stating that if somebody does come to the district requesting a, a break?
Yes.
And they, I'm only asking for nonprofit community, that we are made aware.
Sure. And, and also, the, the purpose of these fees, obviously, is so that at some point, we are gonna replace these surfaces again. It took eighteen years, and, and probably three years too late, when we replaced them this time, 'cause they were in really rough shape. So, the goal is to, to allow these funds to build up to a point where, if we have to replace, you know, a surface, that we do have the funds. We were lucky enough to, to have the committee vote, some surplus monies to, to do those fields, and we've got a eleven million dollar investment out there now, that we're hoping to get the most use out of, but we also want other people to use it also.
Thank you, I yield.
Mr. Bailey?
For me, it's just one of those things that come to mind, when we talk about, you know, eleven million dollar facilities.
Bobby?
Oh, sorry, is, is the liability piece of insurance, when you're using certain facilities, to make sure that, not only are we renting and protecting the fields, but we're protecting the people who are using them, when we get certain crowds.
So, we, well, yeah, so we, we, no one uses the field unless they come with a policy to protect the district, and then, in that policy also, they are taking full responsibility of the use of the school and the facilities.
Anything further? Mr. Agia?
Following up on Mr. Bailey, so, I think I asked this before, if I didn't, I apologize, but I'm gonna ask it again. The policy, what are the policies for the new school, for the dirt-free high indoor, as far as what's respected, what's allowed, what's not allowed? Water, Gatorade, gum, high heels, the whole, like?
It's, it's straight water, there's nothing else that's allowed, no food on the fields. So, in the stands, they would be allowed to have other, other things, but on the fields, on the playing fields, for teams that are coming in, water and water only.
And that's in tightrope, like, it's policed, how is it being policed?
Every, every one of the schools that will play us, will receive that prior to the season starting, that they are not to bring any Gatorade onto the fields. That's, that's basically what we're policing, we're hoping that each group pays attention to that. I'm sure that those people who are at the facility, the AD, the assistant AD, would be looking to see if those products are not being brought on the field. I, I will say that the conversation has been had before, about having a person who does this work strictly on rentals. It wasn't including our own games, but it was for outside rentals, that we have someone there to police all of the things that we ask people to do and to don't, so to speak.
And so, that's in there, or is not in?
It is, it is not in, in the matrix, no, it's not, right now.
Yeah. We made an investment, I'm gonna support this for that reason, but I will ask that you come back to the committee with the policy, like, what, we just went over a whole bunch of policies, that a lot of them are not nearly as important as this one. So, I'd like to see a, a good review of what the policy is, what it's not, to get everybody on the same page. So, when you have to tell somebody, you can't do it, you have our backing, that we voted on a policy, 'cause a lot of times, we go, well, they said, he said, whatever, I wanna see what the policy is. When we did the new indoor facility, whatever that was, ten, fifteen years ago, it was promised to the committee that worked on that, that we were gonna do no food in the gym, this and that, no way did it happen. That can't happen again. And by putting it in a policy that says, this is what's going on, we shouldn't see somebody walking in there with a coffee, period. But right now, there's no policy, I don't think it's sort of up in the air. So, I'm gonna vote for this, but I hope that you'll be able to put together all policies. Thank you, I yield.
I, I will piggyback on Mr. Agia. In the gym, they're not allowed to have any coffee or anything, it's strictly water inside the gym, that little eating area outside is where they have to be.
Weight room, gym.
Okay. Okay. And who, right now, is, if that's the existing policy, Mr. Pacheco, who's responsible for enforcing that?
Well, depends on what event it is, so we, we do monitor.
A basketball game?
So, a basketball game, we would have a city, I mean, a school department personnel at that, that would hopefully be doing that along with everything else.
Well, I'm with Mr. Agia, though I see it kind of, through the year, it seems to get loosey-goosey.
Oh, absolutely.
I know, okay. And the same thing, he brought up something else, high heels on the, on the turf, is that allowed?
So, it's not the heel, it's the shape of the heel. So, a stiletto heel, a pointy heel, is not, it's not going to puncture the surface, but it's not advised that we use this.
Okay, all right. Anything further on this, Ms. Rodrick?
Just a quick question. So, the community nonprofits that are currently using that space, how much notice are they being given for that price increase?
Nobody's using the fields.
Nobody's using it right now?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, they'll all receive this whole piece, and before we send them any policy, obviously, we'll be bringing that back before the seasons start to the committee.
Because it is, it is doubled, and for a small nonprofit, that is going to be a pretty huge hit. So, if we did have folks currently using it, they would need a lot of lead time to be able to make that work, but if no one's using it right now, hopefully, that's okay.
Anything further? Mr. Hart?
Just on what Mr. Bailey was saying, Ken, about the insurance, you did say that they need an insurance binder?
They do.
Oh, okay, okay. I thought, I thought you said something differently.
And it names us as.
Okay. And then, as far as what Mr. Agia was saying about the policies, if you want to maybe get together on that with this week as far as the subcommittee goes, we can, we can add something on. So, I yield.
Anything further? Deb, please call the roll.
I need a motion.
Oh, we need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion, a second. Deb, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mr. Rodrick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Twelve-ten is a discussion and vote to approve the naming and renaming committee as referred by the Facilities and Operations Subcommittee and presented by Mr. Pacheco.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion.
Second.
Mr. Pacheco.
So, there were a couple of things that I mentioned in the cover letter, a, a request that I had made to the committee to remove a portion of the fourth bulleted line item under the criteria which reads, and who has been deceased for a period of at least two years, if, if that was something acceptable to the committee. And then, the second piece was that before we, we call a meeting of this group, the superintendent will receive the requests as, as the, the procedure says, vet those, that request first, and then put the, the committee on notice that, that they can start some deliberations. I also wanted to take that this time to see if the, if this committee wanted to add any names to that committee that's currently in place. That was voted on a while back and hasn't met as of yet.
Ms. Lawrie?
That was my first question. Have you met yet?
They have not met yet.
Sorry, have not met yet. When would you want us to come back if we do have some recommendations?
I, we can just, you can just forward them to the, I would think, though, that this committee was a committee that was voted on by the school committee, so I would think that you're going to need it to come back here for a vote, unless it's, it can be tonight, which I'm not sure anybody is prepared.
So, maybe by next month, if we have any recommendations, we can get this done.
Sure.
Okay. I yield.
Anything further on it? Mr. Agia?
The, when this was approved, my recollection is that the superintendent is the gatekeeper, basically.
Yes.
So, I want to just make sure that's clear as well, that it's not, you can't just jump to bring something forward without the superintendent doing the background research, and she has basically veto power.
Yes.
To make sure that if it's not, in her mind, something that's worth going to that subcommittee, can't bypass the superintendent, correct?
No, no, it has to go to the superintendent first. When it leaves the superintendent, it goes to this committee.
Correct, but the superintendent holds the gate.
Exactly, yes.
Thank you. I yield. Motion approved.
I have a motion.
There's already a motion.
There's already a motion, a second. Mr. Agia, Deb?
Mr. Chairman, before you do, the, the request for those, that line, could that, would the committee entertain that? A yes or no?
You're talking about the criteria page?
Yeah, just on that criteria page, which is.
I think it's pretty encompassing. I don't see too much wrong with it. Anybody have any suggestions for corrections on the criteria? As Mr. Agia said, it's the superintendent who vet each name, and then it will go to the committee after that.
And the highlight in blue is, is, is where we would ask the, if the committee feels that they want a person to be able to receive this, a dedication, so to speak, if they're still alive, because right now, it says they need to be deceased.
Two years, right?
Right.
No, whether they're, if they're alive, they should also be, it should also be, yeah, approved for them, I think.
Do we want to amend that and take out, change the wording to civic service to a municipal facility, period?
I would make a motion to amend that.
I'll second it.
And take out who has been deceased for a period of two years?
Yes.
Okay. I have a motion, a second, on, and who has been deceased for two years being removed from the criteria. Any discussion on that? Go ahead, Mr. Agia.
The, we're only taking out the words about deceased, the rest of it stays?
Yes.
Up until facility.
No.
Yeah, who has, and, from and down, Mr. Agia, and who has been deceased for a period of at least two years.
Period.
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 The rest of it is highlighted, that's why I'm.
Yeah, the rest stays.
Yeah, it, it was highlighted just because I was trying to draw attention to that.
Oh, I know what you mean.
Particular bullet point.
So, it's only that little piece?
It's just that one piece.
Well, how about where it says his or her next of kin?
Well, if you take out the.
Just she, she got to take that out.
Well, we're not, we're not eliminating someone deceased from being named.
Oh, okay.
So, we would want to leave that in.
Okay. He's right. Anything further? Go ahead.
Just a comment. I, I still think the most important piece is superintendent vetting these things before it just comes to the politicians to vote on, so I'm in favor of this because it would, it would still have to go to her, or whoever the superintendent is, to say this is a valid situation, so I will support it. Thank you.
Okay, so, we have a motion, a second, on removal of that line from the criteria. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mr. Rodrick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Now, I want to approve in the policy, do I have a motion, a second, Deb?
On the?
On the whole, on the whole renaming committee? No?
Yes.
I do. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mr. Rodrick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Thirteen is a for information. Obviously, there's a number of retirements.
Motion to accept retirements.
New hires, regretfully, a few deceased. I have a motion, a second, on accepting the four-year information. Deb, you want to call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Just a question on which, which part are we on for the information?
Oh, you're on for your information.
All of it or just that one?
All, all of it. The hires and the resignations.
I just had a question on the hires.
Go ahead.
So, at some point, I thought I saw in here, behavior therapist on the hire list. Did I see that somewhere, or am I, there's a lot of them? And my question is, I thought we were, we were not going to be utilizing that term anymore.
I see behavior therapist on page sixteen, partially down.
I recall multiple times that we had talked about this, and we were going to, we created the SEL liaison for the reason that we were going to not be filling these spots, just looking for some info.
The position was an existing budgeted position. It's also a collectively bargained position. I defer to Attorney Assad on this, but we've actually received communication from the, the union on this, and the position was approved to be posted.
So, they can tell us who we're going to fill positions or not?
No. It was a budgeted position. It was an existing position.
Exactly. So, it's a budgeted position. We were told by the superintendent and you, or whoever else was involved in these conversations, that we were not going to fill those positions anymore at budget time. I was told that specifically from the administration, that we were not going to fill these positions anymore. We were going to do a different type of position, which is in your purview, to, to not fill a position and fill it with another. I just don't get it.
We said we weren't going to add new positions. We have existing, we have a couple of existing behavior therapist positions already budgeted for.
Right, but when you, if you say we're not going to use, we're not going to use that terminology for a reason, that we're going to create a new position, when the position becomes vacant, that's how you, through attrition, lose those positions. We just keep on doing, we say we're not going to fill a position, nope, the A position doesn't make sense, but, but let's fill it again. So, now, we're stuck with another positions again. It, it doesn't make any sense. I yield.
Do I have a motion, a second, on four-year information?
You do.
Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
No.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mr. Rodrick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Any new business to come before the committee? Item nineteen, fourteen, hearing none. Attorney Assad, do we have any reason to go into executive session?
There would, ma'am.
Would you please tell us?
First, would be Mass General Law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one eighty-seven, to review and approve the executive session minutes for July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, regular school committee meeting. Also, Mass General Law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, including workers' compensation case regarding James Collette, Department of Industrial Accidents Board number zero-one-one-seven-one-five-dash-one-eight, as the chair has determined that open session may have a detrimental impact on the litigation position of the committee. Mass General Law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, including workers' compensation case regarding Centita Castellano, Department of Industrial Accidents Board number zero-three-one-nine-one-two-dash-two-one, as the chair has determined that open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Mass General Law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all administrators and employees represented by the Forward Administrators Association, as the chair has determined that open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Mass General Law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all professional teaching employees of the Forward School System, including coaches, Title I teachers, nurses, occupational and physical therapists and specialists in the teaching profession represented by the Forward Educators Association, as the chair has determined that open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Mass General Law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one eighty-two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel and/or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, including Allison Los, redesign coach, Heather Tibbetot, administrative assistant for the Special Education Department, Paula Saws, executive assistant to the superintendent, Deborah Cabral, administrative assistant, assistant to the school committee, Lori Madura, assistant, administrative assistant, Megan Souza, administrative assistant, Grace Costa, administrative assistant, Linda Scenario, administrative assistant, Guredi Fattado, administrative assistant, Giselle DeGrassa, DeBraca, human resource coordinator, Stacy Gehan, financial manager, Kelly Mahoney, athletic trainer, John Ventura, director of safety and security services, Louis Torres, director of campus services, Kenneth Pacheco, chief operating officer, Kevin Almeida, chief financial officer, Thomas Coogan, human resource director, Dr. Tracy Curly, assistant superintendent, chief academic officer, Laurie Obanchin, assistant superintendent of special education, Clarice Brooks, former Robert L. Maduris Resiliency Preparatory Academy principal. I apologize for some of the names and the pronunciations. We will reconvene that may or may not be statements at that time.
Can I have a motion, a second, to go into executive session?
Motion.
Second.
Our motion, second. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mr. Rodrick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Anything further to come before the committee?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
Make a motion to approve the executive session minutes for July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, of the regular school committee meeting.
I have a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mr. Rodrick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Anything further?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
A motion to approve Allison Los' contract as negotiated.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mr. Rodrick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Any new business to come before the committee? Item nineteen, fourteen, hearing none. Attorney Assad, do we have any reason to go into executive session?
There would, ma'am.
Would you please tell us?
First, would be Mass General Law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one eighty-seven, to review and approve the executive session minutes for July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, of the regular school committee meeting.
I have a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mr. Rodrick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Anything further to come before the committee?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
Make a motion to approve the executive session minutes for July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, of the regular school committee meeting.
I have a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.